Call this meeting. Call the meeting Wednesday, May 26th Franklin and Plank, which needs to be warm in order to stand for the last.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did everybody get a chance to read the meeting minutes from April 21st? I make a motion to approve. The motion to approve is my first place, I want by Commissioner Cole, second by Commissioner Carla. I think we've got enough people on, we should probably roll call votes tonight, since we've got several on Zoom and several names that I don't necessarily know yet. Go ahead, Jack.
All right. For that, but that's okay. Carla Jimenez?
Yes.
Franklin Tonight?
Yes.
Jennifer Layton?
Yes.
Adam Cole?
Yes.
Sam Irons?
Yes.
Zach Reasy? Absent. And Jake Kane?
Yes. Please, that motion passes. I guess let's jump right into whole business. We had a public hearing. On the April 21st meeting, we did continue. I don't even believe we went through. The sheet at all, we just opened it and continued it, correct? So we pretty much need to start over. The point of the public hearing in the whole business is the River Ridge Phase four through eight. Hearing an applicant will get into the application with the staff report, but at this time, we'll go ahead and commence the public hearing. Any objections? Any objections to jurisdiction? Okay, Barry, you want to take us through the staff report?
Real quickly, on March 5th, 2021, William Holmes Incorporated submitted a preliminary plat, overall master plan for phases four through eight of River Ridge subdivision. This application changes the overall master plan from the originally approved master plan that was done by Prancing Horse LLC in 2003. It will clean up some survey mess that was left from the previous summer to Prancing Horse, which was Lynn Moore and his wife. Her name right now. And they divided it into two, two and a half acre lots that were still. In that were still planted, so it's messed up the surveys a little bit because the survey is a little more accurate these days than it was back then. They put in approval criteria, so you had an opportunity to look, look at that. The application was received March 5th, 2021. Okay, notice for testimony, open for River Ridge, that board went phase two, was published and posted on March 30th. And 2023 days and. Or 22 days prior to the planning commissioner. The county informed us that they did not get notified and asked for the continuation of the hearing. Commission did that. Such importantly, we had a meeting with the county, the county's request, and we received another letter. Monday. And basically, the county is looking for a decorative fence across property. They are looking for a traffic study by the applicant. Because. Access is to a county road. Those are the requirements of the county. And so. I don't know when we are going, you know, there's five different phases, all of them about somewhere close to 30 in size. And. At the rate we're building right now, I don't know. We're not going to fill those up for a while. I mean, usually it's about a. Nine months to a year before you start getting the actual houses. Going through the process. And. I commend the staff report. To end the findings. To show the county's requirement and request for the deputy fence. I'd like to see it approved, so they can get proceeding.
So there are a quick question, I was just going through the. The findings. I believe there might be a couple errors. I don't know if we correct those before approval or what we need to do, but item number two in the findings. References testing at all the phase three, I think that must have been a typo.
Yeah.
And then item six, no comments have been received. We should probably have the county's comments.
In the updated one, it'll show the record since last meeting and this meeting.
Any questions for Barry or who want? Do they want the fence along the southern border?
Yes.
Subdivision, right, right next to Coonsy? And the intention of that is to limit access pedestrian and vehicle from entering Coonsy other than the designated location.
Correct.
Okay, we'll just keep moving then if we have any follow up questions for Barry. Unless this is the time to ask for camera's comments, is that now or should we wait until deliberation by commissioners? Or should we ask now?
Should have. Because we reopen the hearings.
Okay. But really, I don't know if the county is going to be a opponent or a proponent. Okay, proponent case? Do you have anything to say in favor of the project?
Kayla? You want to pipe in?
Yeah, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just had a question on the traffic study because I, I read the letter from the county and they weren't, from my opinion, maybe Tamara can. Clarify this, they weren't asking for a traffic study, their only request was would a, an access permit be required? To access Coonsy Road when we get to that point, and the second one was the decorative fence along the Coonsy Road. Or a common, common fence. And to that point, I spoke with the developer, they plan on doing that common fence, and so that being a condition. The only thing I would, the only thing I wanted to clarify is that that condition would apply to the final plat of that adjacent development. Once we, once the subdivision build out gets to Coonsy Road. But then I would ask Tamara to clarify on the traffic study. And then also available engineer of record for phase three and managing this project, so if any of the planning commission staff have any questions, they'll stand by and happy to answer those.
And Jake, you see the county did make a comment in chat that they would like to speak in favor.
Okay. I guess it. They would like to, or just say this up?
There's a chat box right here.
Would you like to elaborate on that, Tamara, or is that your comment?
I would just very briefly, Chair Kane and members of the planning commission, the county is in favor, it's just very impressive, all the residential development the city's doing. You are correct, Mr. Stromstad, we're not asking for a traffic study, we realize that this is just one of the phases. We just make note of that. We are asking for an access permit to Coonsy Road, and we'd like to ask that you coordinate with Matt Scripner, our Public Works Director, before you finalize that final plat. In case there needs to be some adjustment to that in order to meet spacing and turnaround standards, et cetera. And yes, and the fence is, as the chair says, primarily to prevent folks from trying to come directly off Coonsy onto their backyard. And I think most folks want to have some sort of fence from their backyard anyway, so we're hoping that's met. With some positive reception as well. Anyway, that's all, and happy to answer questions if you have them.
Well, thanks, Tamara, I think that makes a lot of sense, I appreciate it. So where's? Sorry, I'm just trying to come up with project. This application was. Didn't include, this is basically just the application for, I mean, it doesn't include the preliminary plat yet, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so the preliminary plat process, when you access a new, legal access onto a road that's not city owned, is there a process there, army encompasses approaching the county?
Yes.
And getting that access permit done through the partition process, not necessarily a completely separate. Legal access process, right? So it'd be accomplished in the partition process?
If that holds as the partition, yes. As Tamara mentioned, there may be changes because of the standards that the county has for location. I don't think that's going to be the case. It looks like it's going to need the standards, so. And they created more different pocket parts.
Was there, was there a road coming out?
Yes, River Ridge Drive basically goes through, not on a, not on a straight line, there's a little bit of a curve to it, put it in the right place.
Is the, so the preliminary partition document, is it in correspondence here somewhere, or is that just part of the pack? I remember seeing a drawing, was that part of the pack from last time? Okay, I guess we'll just keep moving on here, I think we got the comments we need. Regardless, I do remember seeing it in the first pack that we had of the drawing, and there isn't access on the Coonsy. So is there any opponents in the room or on Zoom? Of the project? Hearing them move through the cross examination of opponents. Any comment from the public agencies?
On this project, no. Other than the county.
Okay. We don't have any rebuttal evidence needed to be heard. At this time, I'm glad to close the public hearing and deliberate by the council. Comments, questions, or discussion items? So the only thing the county is wanting is access permit from. Right, my reading is definitely obtain an access permit to Moore County, other words. When the final act's proven correct to the Coonsy. And then that would be condition number one, right? Access approval from county, whether that be. A access permit process or approvals through the partition process, they need to get access permission from the county.
Yeah, because they're going to, they'll final plat with. Be in, in each one of those phases, I believe.
The second condition would be a, a fence along the entirety of the south boundary at time of phase, what phase is that, eight?
That'd be seven and eight, maybe even six, six and eight.
So. Southern fence. To limit access. Or southern property boundary. At time of. Affected phase. Okay. There, I didn't want to track the study down. I just went through the third comment, which is tax finding, and we do have facts in this packing now, which was the items one through.
And I will amend, you're providing what? Everything the commission does.
Right. Any questions, comments from other commissioners? Any motions for approval or denial? All right, I'll make a motion to approve. With the two. Indications, one, require the developer to obtain an access permit for Moore County Public Works. And two, fence along their southern border at the time for the effective approval.
One second.
A motion to approve with the conditions as stated by Commissioner Cole, there was second by Commissioner Rabner. Jackson's going to do the roll call.
Carla Jimenez?
Yes.
Franklin Tonight?
Yes.
Jennifer Layton?
Yes.
Adam Cole?
Yes.
Sam Irons?
Yes.
Zach Reasy?
Yes.
Jake Kane?
Yes. With those unanimous vote, motion carries. So moving into new business. Looks like we get kind of a full agenda here, so we'll keep moving quick. We have. So in the packet, we've got. The ADS stuff. It's not in the. Okay, and yes, it's in. Okay, sorry, we're still in the whole business here, I apologize. I didn't see a follow up, so you made a decision and you're going to inform us or outside?
I have not made the decision yet, I've received additional comments in the meantime from the Department of Transportation and from Moore County. Want the. Comments from the Department of Transportation, basically to follow what our transportation system plan. And interchange area management plan in particular, are looking at. That the county and the state and the city all agreed upon almost 13 or 19 years ago. As part of this partition request, one of the things that the city is required is roadway and utility easement. And the roadway right away will, is basically almost. To the T. What is planned for the, for the. Loop, loop road, because we don't have a name for it yet, and that will be. Go up to Oregon Trail. Part that goes across ADS's property. Is being deeded, is being dedicated to the city. And can you put that map up? As you can see, the red line is what's going to be dedicated to the city. The blue line is access into what would be part of parcel two. And the black line is currently at BPA, being, being reviewed. As the method to get across the BPA easement. And that's owned by Eric Mon. And so. Under the BPA easement, and that way we can tie back to Oregon Trail, and we will have a full loop. To be able to deal with the traffic on, on the east side of Main Street, which is, I didn't put up the other. And that's, this is what was, is in the IAMP. Is, is basically the route is being established, and then it's just a matter of. Coming up with money to get the project done, and it's being designed by the Intersevere as, as we speak. And it's not as straight as what we drew in 2010. In our. IAMP. But that's because trying to meet the requirements of BPA, we have to stay kind of close to the towers. So we've got maximum height of the BPA transmission lines over the top of what would be, what could be truck traffic and. Additional vehicle traffic, and at that point, we get that street put in, because of traffic volume, we'd probably make that a right in, right out only. In order to cut down on the left turns going on southeast front. So it doesn't back up in that 200 foot throat that we have between the off ramps and on ramps. And front street.
So essentially, it's going to be a one way street?
No, it'll be a two way street, it would just be right turn out. You'd have to, to, to get down this southeast front, you'd have to go into Oregon Trail and come back in if you're coming across from the north side of town.
Tony?
Yes.
Would you mind sharing your screen, please?
I am. Do you see it now, Sam?
Yes, thank you.
There we go.
And that word, does it connect to Anderson, or is it going to be before Anderson?
It'll be before Anderson. What, what you see, where you see 24, 25. Going to the east, that's, that's frontier part, trailer park. So we're just on the other side of, to the east of that.
Okay.
So the pickup of the, of the dedicated. Roadway and utilities is going to be able to provide the route that we need to be able to get that loop road completed.
So for discussion and what you need from us, this is a type two decision, right? So this is, so you're looking for comments from us, but not necessarily any type of a decision?
I can still make, it's still administrative decision. But I will, this is another one, I will amend the. Findings to show all the things that I'm explaining to you here, one of the things that Tamara and Matt had brought up is that parcel two would be landlocked, but they'd have access, they'd have access on the dedicated. Roadway and utilities. The, the blue line that was on the last one is where their second temporary access is now.
But I read through the other doc comments earlier, and they were pretty strong convictions of this being. Basically affecting the interchange and the, and the city TSP plan enough, or they're even. Recommending, I mean, the implementation of the loop roads, correct?
Correct.
That might be a condition of approval you might look at as, as conditioning the development. To put it in loop road or something. Partitioned off or, or whatever, you know. At least pay for part of it, if you're trying to find.
Well, they're giving it, giving up the property or.
I'm having a comment for Barry, anybody else have any comments for their ADS approval?
No, thanks, Sharon.
Good.
We were in the county of the house. Um, we talked, we talked about the same term of talk about River Ridge. Okay, sorry, I had to have myself before. Now we're moving into business. So first item on the agenda is PPA 01-2121. I'm glad and. Quest public hearing is done, purpose of the hearing is a profit limited partnership zone change request for a parcel property down on Marine Drive or just off Marine Drive to the north of us. So any extension. So on this one, Gary, I'm going to ask, you know, myself commissioner's. Opinion on this, but the Florida White and Department of Florida of Moral. The Florida of Moral currently owns this property, which we make reports. Uh, basically the applicant. Of this zone change. I definitely have a potential conflict of interest. So I'm I'm ready for the same, um, but what does everybody else think about it? Well, you need to obtain, we have a a point, we can definitely move on. You want to obtain? I I I do, I'll go ahead and confuse myself for this decision. Does that mean I commence the public hearing already?
It's already open so that you it's already open that can just continue on.
So continue on, still direct the discussion, but not any?
I have no problem with that. I don't see a reason why you can't still facilitate.
Okay. Any other objections? Any objections to the jurisdiction?
Sharon, there's a comment from the county. Saying for the ADS discussion, which county may have made point four concluded the fact that this is a plan. I understand no further comment was done, but wanted to check.
Yes. 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 So no objections to your station? On March tenth, twenty twenty-one, a request was received from Profit Limited Partnership. For zone change areas and preliminary platform or tax lot. Tax map one more twenty-five east. Zero four, zero four. This lot is twenty-two point nine four acres in size. And is parcel two of partition flat twenty nineteen point nine. The lot is currently zoned like industrial and the application wishes to change. This is on to master plan development. Most of them is for mixed use of apartments, conveniences, retail, commercial, and common. Uh, areas and and clubhouse. There will be at build out two hundred and forty living units. If. Application is proposing a chapter of the Development Code. Uh, chapter four point five master plan development, which is not used anywhere anywhere within the city with within the city currently. Master plan development will be operated by a homeowners association. Or equivalent. And with codes and covenants and restrictions within the development. The C C N R's are not enforced by the city as there is several penalties. Which will be dealt with with the Homer homeowners association law. The this type of development increases density from a single-family residential. Of about four point two five units per acre to about two and a half times. To ten units per acre. Yet about half as much as the density of a as multifamily. And. For example, per view of apartments is. It's why I got twenty minutes. Relevant chapters, chapter two point four, chapter three point one. Chapter three point two landscaping trees, chapter three point three vehicle and bicycle parking, chapter four. Public facility standards, chapter five master plan development and chapter four ten traffic impact study. Oh, one, go two, go three, go four. Oh. Five. Four, six, four, seven. Four, eight. And then go. Thirteen, fourteen. And fifteen through nineteen it meets, so we'll just focus on the other ones. Light industrial district, which the property is currently zoned, sets forward criteria for development allowance in the zone. Uh, chapter three point one is access and circulation. And deals with transportation planning, providing both access and circulation patterns for traffic for vehicles and pedestrians. Chapter three point two. Is landscaping tree trees, fences and walls of a little landscaping plant. Chapter three vehicle bicycle parking. Code provides required parking for development methodology. These requirements, the parking of wherever is two off-street parking spaces for each living unit. And that's maybe part of land agreement of the homeowners association or equivalent. I still haven't received the narrative from developer. Uh, as to how that homeowners association. Public facility standards, this is part of the reason they are asking for various. Things that they wish to do is have. Streets that are as narrow as twenty-seven feet. Some comments. From the fire department, our engineering firm. Uh, that they would like to see thirty-foot of pavement, the asphalt with two-foot rivers on both sides. Of the actual hard surface area of thirty-four feet. And the other thing that the fire department brought up was that they don't want to have a roundabout. They'd rather have a straight intersection. Chapter four ten provides conditions and methodology for traffic impact study. Through this. There's nineties. In accordance would be the chapter four ten. Specifically subsection four ten one hundred B ninety-six single-family units and ten A D T a day is about nine hundred and sixty A D T. A D T is average daily trips. Ninety-six of six apartments in it's at five A D T a day is four hundred and eighty. And commercial office is thirty A D T for a thousand square feet. In the square footage of ninety-eight hundred. Square feet, ninety-eight hundred forty square feet times thirty a day would be two ninety-five and a total. One, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five trips a day indicates a staffing. Uh, traffic study is required is required for for to subsection four point one zero point two zero zero. Sub A sub one sub A and subsection four point ten point two hundred. A subset sub A sub two and sub A. So. Requirements. As we move to the the. Natural resources, there there is an identified wetland area on the property which may require mitigation. Upon development, however, it appears it may not be a natural wetland rather than a manmade or or spark. I don't think there is. Where we where the rubber really hits the road, those uh. Goal nine economic development for moral and their economic and community benefits analysis two thousand seventeen. Show permanent employment of eight thousand four hundred and fifty-two jobs. An economic output is two point seven seven billion gross domestic product of one point oh eight billion. And five hundred million in labor income. And two hundred and sixty million in local, state and federal taxes. City has a total of forty-three point oh oh three five acres of light industrials on property currently. The proposed master development would use twenty-two point two twenty-two point nine four acres. Leaving twenty point zero nine five of light industrial land in the Seelock industrial park, all with exist existing public services. To lots ranging from point. One point two two acres, there are other properties. Of about another three to three point five acres. Which are part of large larger lots not being used that could be. So that puts you about half of your light industrial. Housing, the city has an inventory of approximately nine hundred and seventy-five acres of residential zone land within the city was an average. Four point two five units per acre with right ways and thirty units constructed per year. This would represent almost twenty-five years of of available land for single. The city has several subdivisions and some form of development, Tuscan Tuscanian orbit. Base three, which will be uh three nine lots, not fifty-one because they. Give up two lots and purple for to the pocket parts. On that's on fifteen point seven one acres. Base development, Chaparral Estates, which will be sixty-six lots or a large lot. On the B P A under B P A easement. They're going to get those sixty-six lots on twenty point three. And we're prepared to say this is one of these go with. Fifty. If hundred fifty-four lots. On pocket place. Definitely sixty-six one through through. Seven sixty-six twenty-six through. Public facilities and services, the city may. We tend twenty thousand general applications for. Four million. We're proven this water wastewater systems to assure the ability to support projected growth. This uh G O one will increase capacity for both systems and. Increase reliability of systems as well. See that if we were tricked, both well transportation, the city's actively working on the design of additional sewer lines. And roadways to fulfill interchange area management plan for moral interchange, liable to one sixty-five. But the city is also looking at port of the interchange. And the improvements which are there in traders which would be required to be that. Findings in fact, public notice was posted in East Oregon. Oregonian and male to all required interest by parties on May twelve fourth, twenty twenty-one or on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Application is insisted will be subject to chapter three point one access and circulation on all this. This application is. With will be subject to chapter two point two landscaping fences and street trees. Developments. Or the application's consistent with chapter three point three vehicle bicycle parking on development. Parking slots. This application is not consistent and has requested a variance to some of the pavement standards as I mentioned this. Wanting. Street lips down to twenty-seven. It's consistent or can be consistent with all of the chapters of the comprehensive plan. Land conservation document comments dated April twenty-nine twenty. From. Included in the packet in May twelfth. Mail from Gene Doll, which was received on this project. Yeah. Or for the role of our protection district is informing that we say how much they have. Summary, this application is on change subdivision of twenty-two point nine four acre parcel. For master plan development, chapter four point five. For the development of this proposed action will require a traffic study to be done prior to destruction of the development. Additionally, various to street with standards being reviewed by the department. For the purpose of new capabilities within the development. Comes governance and restrictions. The H O A or equivalent has not been presented as such. So one of the conditions. The impacts child study. It's going to have to happen. To the the road with. By recommendation.
Well, it it was not just the fire department, it was it was our engineer as well. And so.
With the where it's at, where it's located with all school kids, are they going to have sidewalks for kids to do what we want?
Yes.
Because right now there's not enough area for them to walk it.
Except for the walking path.
Yeah, but that's kind of inconvenient.
Oh, they're just will give. They're they will have pedestrian, there are pedestrian plans inside the in inside. The development. It that will. Master plan, no, no, it's kind of like a sun river.
Is it a two, two-story buildings or?
I don't know if the apartment buildings are going to be three-story or two, that they will be two-story. Uh, most of the con the condominiums will be two stories as well. Because they'd be more like town halls.
There's a process question. Sure. Is it going to be an issue for approval or not? With the applicant not being the order proper?
That could be a condition that hit her on her.
So the. The applicant's just.
Correct.
What I'm saying is the builder doesn't work properly.
They but they basically. The the developer went forward the application because.
We've never, the the city has never done master plan development. And it's allowable under our code to do this. It's just it's. You know. Asking for the variances from some of the the standards of the city. Are kind of unusual, but it.
Did they give a reason why they needed to have a?
It it gives more, it gives more open space.
Oh, it was just.
It gives more open space, but but you know, we we received comments from the fire department. That they were concerned about the maneuverability inside in inside there because. I mean, on some of the some of the standards that we have like thirty-two foot streets with. Curved curve. Or. With ribbon curb are. They're hard to park on. And they're. Hard for the bigger trucks to maneuver.
So I see the the fire department's request of thirty feet. What was the developers' original?
They they had some that were down as was twenty-seven and twenty-six feet.
You think you can go make sure your car. You are. Astounded at how wide your car is.
Especially if you have mirrors.
Yes, and then if you have. Two of you and yeah, and then. Twenty-seven and twenty-eight feet is really narrow.
Well, is there gonna be, is there, are they allowed to park their cars next on the road or is there a condition that they can't put their cars?
Right now. Right now, our standard is to allow. Street parking spots for every living unit. Now, if they set up an HOA to put up what's in a limit as to how many vehicles you can have in. This development. They they may have only one car. They can make that part of the C C N R's or the H O A's. Term. We wouldn't be approving or denying we'd be making a recommendation for approval because this has to go through two hearings, one at city council. So it would be a legislative decision process type.
So not being familiar with paving of streets is the extra three feet that we're asking for them to add on a big deal?
It might change some of their some of their lot sizes and things like that, yes.
So how wide is? The street that you live on, whatever that streets.
The the. Third phase, those streets are thirty-two.
I wanna know how like right when they built when they built the houses on. In that eight home, how wide are those streets?
Well, the first phase was was. The first phase was thirty-four foot and it's a noticeable difference when you go into the second phase. That it necks down and it's only losing two feet, it's thirty-two.
Well, that that's why I wanted to bring that up. There is a distinct thing for you to think in your mind. How that looks. And so Sam, you can see that, what'd you say thirty-two feet or thirty?
Two feet curb face to curb face.
And that in the beginning it was thirty-four?
Yeah, thirty-four, thirty-six.
Okay, so you can see what thirty-four looks like when everybody comes home at night and parks on both sides of the street. Too, just so you have a visual there.
Yeah, anybody that parks a pickup on the street, all mirrors are folded in.
I'd like to see the streets stay at least thirty feet curb to curb.
Well, what what's proposed with if we if if they go into ribbon curb, which is flat basically. Goes into a a swale between that and the sidewalk. That would end up that would end up being thirty-four because the standard for our ribbon curb is is two foot wide.
Right.
Add another four feet to make it thirty-four feet.
And you can see an example of that kind of curving in the.
In Tuscany, in. The. Remember. River Ridge now base three has ribbon curb as well. I didn't think I was unlike them, but I'm beginning to see their advantages. Because that extra that that two foot ribbon curb. Does make a difference and now you know how many. Things can be put on, the vehicles can be put on the street and still have methods here.
So then if the variance, they have a variance. What do they want it to be, twenty?
Twenty-seven.
Seven. Then winds up actually being if it's driven, it winds up being about thirty?
Well, it'd be two and two twenties, yeah, it'd be one. But the ribbon curb is is hard surface, surface. So the way I see everybody parking on the ribbon curb is their right side. Tires are sitting on the ribbon curb.
Any other questions, Barry?
Yeah, so the fire departments where they want to go roundabout and they want the roads to be.
Right, the regular intersection, yeah.
Commonly there is street parking with the street fire companies towards the city of Orleans requiring thirty feet. With two two foot paved shoulders that would hold thirty-four feet. Fire hydrant quantity and locations and remove a roundabout and replace the typical street intersections.
Is that in the package or is that something you're reading?
No, it's on the tag here. Our way up. Well, my show aside, but my after the public goes here.
And those. What's in there?
She's asking if the bill. Or of. Is.
They they got some some open space in. This area right here is that 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 would be open space, yes.
Any question for? Barry and Saford, we're gonna keep an eye for the public space. Okay, any bonus? For the application?
Ten eleven, ten and eleven were the interact.
Oh, they didn't come, oh, they didn't come, they did not come.
I was just trying to, I remember reading that comment in the chat box or this is something there.
No, that was.
Was it? Alright, any up bonus in the case? So no proverbs, no up bonus. Let's skip the cross examination, any comments besides the fire department's comments on the public agency?
No. Well, yes, it was part of the land conservation development and. Turn out the warrant, leave your house. And they were just wanting to see what they were doing with. So they they ended up getting packaged. Cause they noticed it was simple to pop up. Online. And. Nineteenth deadline to have staff reports and we actually got it posted online on eighteen. And part of the reason I went to. Hold the different goals because. We don't have a building lands inventory, but I can. I can count the ones that are at the get the acreages on that. Give an inventory. And where I've had to be part of that.
Alright, so we can skip the rebuttal on this, this probably will close the hearing and deliver it by chance. So the nineteen hour code, just so I have it correctly, here's the traffic. So I think the side of the fire department task board. Should be included in motion to send to city council.
The traffic study payment with.
About that. Do I need to include the fire header quantity of efficient?
Yes.
We don't need to include whether there be on-street parking, but we pretty sure there will be.
Well, that that will depend on what they do with the HOA and will be.
So the way I'm reading the application, they're asking for three things in this application. One is the zone change, one is the variance for the road width and the other is the. Partition are the. Preliminary plat.
Preliminary plat.
So there's three different things they're asking tonight for. And the very the variances for the road width.
And change changes.
More smaller.
Change your road width will. Change the size of the lots, so they have to reconfigure in some places.
So if the variance is denied tonight, then we can't vote on the preliminary plat because that'll change. So what I understand then is we're looking at the zone change. If the variance is denied this evening, we're not gonna address right now the preliminary plat because they'll change it.
Or no.
But you can, you can. You could, well, this is a process question, carefree based upon conditions of approval. And with planning and development, it all comes together as a single application. Reset that.
Well, when they did apply for three different things in one application, so that's what I'm trying to figure, are we gonna be doing three different?
Three different.
Motion, three different mode, that's what I'm trying to establish.
If you separate it and out and take it from. Two of them would be like you said, only no changes, but if I didn't develop my anyone to say the fashion. Oh, so if Barry can probably explain this a whole lot better than I can, but. A planning development will consider everything together rather than all separate because your partition. And your fairness request wouldn't be like slated, it would be typed previously. And it would have to the city council.
So we could take one motion and to to. Decide what recommendation you're making on the city council. Okay, alright.
Another condition that I'm thinking would be wise to put on there is that we receive. That a condition, the condition of approval is that we have. Is going to have as their C C R's.
Are you, are you talking city approval for that?
No.
Oh.
For the planning permission approval, yes.
For the H O A's V C N R's?
Yeah. That's. In in a roundabout way, you're trying to you you. You don't, you know that there's gonna be any HOA. But you don't know what kind of restrictions are gonna put on that, that could change your decisions too.
So really you're thinking, do you like to have more information before they decide on the recognition?
That's that's up to the permission of just pointing out that. You know, it's. It's a piece of their information that we can't have that.
Oh, I see.
Is is pretty necessary to be able to make decisions.
Okay. So instead of deciding tonight, they could ask the developer to provide more information for the next meeting is what you're saying. The H O A's C C N R's.
That's one off.
Okay. Okay, well, we're already closed the hearing, so we need to continue hearing, we just need to put it on the next agenda if they provided more information.
To make a recommendation.
To make a recommendation to the city council.
Sam and Zach, thoughts?
But it's it was a lot of information to read up on on that one hundred and eighteen page. Report we got, so some of it I skimmed, I'm a I'm a little unclear to be honest about. The specifics of the variance, feels like we don't have a ton of information on it, at least from my end, that might be my own fault. But with the non-existent HOA, I don't see how we can come to an informed decision, to be honest.
Sam, you got any thoughts?
I, I agree with Zach, I'd like a little more time to read over their variances and see if we can't get more information about. What all their HOA is going to require. And the restrictions.
I mean, are we going to bind anyone up if we? If we table this for this meeting?
Do you want to find out the developer if they move this to the next meeting?
The developer will always tell you that. The fact that it has, you know, they they like to get started on phase one relatively quickly and you know what? We're not going to be able to have a. A council hearing on this if we postpone it until at least July. And that starts towards the middle of construction season.
Is there any representatives from the developers here? Do we know?
No.
There's none, Sam.
Okay.
How does everyone else feel on this, on the variance specifically? The zone change, I felt okay.
I'm okay with the zone change, I'm, I'm not okay with the variance on the streets and the roundabout, I don't want either of those. Really what the homeowners association does or doesn't do really. But. We would like more information on whether CCRs are, I'm good with that as well. And then make them do a traffic study.
Well, is there a potential solution in moving forward with some large conditions? Because there's a lot of dependencies, it feels like.
What was that again, Zach?
Is there any kind of solution we could be looking at that we could move forward with that with some heavy conditioning? So we're not holding people up. But still giving. A direction from the planning commission?
Well, you can put the conditions on there. And. And trust that the HOA is going to. Be. Probably pretty stringent. As to what they can and can't do. And they, like I said, the CCNRs can say they. Can only have two vehicles and yet they've got two off, two off-street parking spots and there's a place for two vehicles.
Right, they can always be more restrictive.
Yes.
They can't, and they have to stay within the guidelines anyway of the city, so. But I'm okay with zone change, variance, no. What was the, oh, preliminary plat.
That's going to have to be upon the goal after they come back.
Yeah.
Another preliminary act, because they're going to have to take care of the variances that we deny for us to approve the preliminary plat.
If, 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 if. If you do not, if you deny, you deny basically all three. Which if, but if you do it in that manner, basically you're, you're saying this will pass, you just have to. Give these things to us and make this change on, on the. The barriers because. We have to have. You want 30-foot asphalt track and 20-foot river curbs. But that will change preliminary plat.
What's it at currently? I'm sorry, that was already answered.
27 feet. 27 feet to that.
And did the fire department weigh in on this as well? I'm sorry, I didn't catch all of it, I apologize.
Yes, and your packet is recommendations bearing from the fire department. And just so we're clear, width of the streets. You know, the fire department's worst city of war was requirement of 30 feet with two, two-foot paved shoulders. Obviously, fire height, quantity of locations, remove the roundabout. And quote replace it with just simple street intersections. So.
So those are significant changes.
Right.
Because of the roundabout in the streets, so. Yeah.
Just a comment to the street, the. The width of the right way of the partition is 45 feet. So it might not change partition at all. Construction.
Yeah, the 45 feet is 15 feet shy of where a normal right of course. Normal city street is 60 foot by way.
Yeah, I think Barry made a good point about like Sun River, you know, you get, you get these. Recreation communities that are not built to the rest of your city standards, you know, like, like you say, you go to Sun River and people are just. Biking and walking and, and they come and park their car, so. I, I don't know, in plan to use development, you know, it's too bad that Ted didn't phone in or did send us his. HR old joy. And so, and do we have preliminary plat from them?
Yes.
That's, there's all these happy things here, okay.
Another comment to just point out, it looks like they've got 10-foot additional utility even on both sides of the road by the way. So it'd be 45-foot or two. Right by the way, but then, 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 10, so I stretch one more, so that would be 65 instead of 60.
Well, that would be, the right of way is 60, but the utility, the dry utilities that go in, that takes another 10. It's usually you would tell electrics and everybody else files in the same ditch with.
So basically, we're at a standstill as to procedural, we'll be there, right? So we are, what motion would be and. So what I understood is we're going to be making one motion and one vote to either recommend approval. With the conditions, if possibly like to the city council or deny, and it would be for everything.
Based on what basis?
Yeah.
So.
Right.
You make.
Yeah.
You know. You can make that motion to approve or deny based upon the following conditions being met before the city council. I mean, because they're the ones who are actually making the decision unless it's actual. Right, so okay.
We maybe just need to come up with a list of conditions.
Alright.
To July before we. Because the council meets on the 8th.
8th of June and.
So yeah, maybe in July before the council. What's that?
There's only special meeting.
Good. I don't know how quick I can get to turn it around from the developers.
Well, the council will be here until July, maybe not June.
Yeah, I know, that's it. We do have a June meeting, if, if. Trying to get that turned around with the developer.
So you're just going to put it back until.
They won't hear it until July.
Anyway. So regardless of planning commission's recommendation of approval or deny, city council, it's already opposed that they're still going to have their hearing. On, in July anyways, so it's either they have that with recommendations, planning commission about. And they can still make their decision because we have a public hearing to set that up.
So they don't come back here with a revised plat. We just said there should be a revised plat. Yeah, and then does that back here or?
If, if you say. If you do the conditions. Maybe the best way to do is to just staple it. And then come back with your recommendation. But I'll put a public notice out for a council meeting in July. First, you know, because the next planning commission meeting, I think, is the 16th of June.
Thursday prior.
It's the third Wednesday in June, whatever that is.
That's the 16th.
16th of June, and then, you know, but I, I have to notice.
They're cabling it, doesn't do the same thing on the street.
Unless we do it at the next meeting.
Yeah, ask the developers to come and bring this information.
Because what you're saying, the city council about the state of the law with this.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of all the notification requirements, city council is not going to hear this.
Now, we'll be here to answer more of the question. Yeah, basically, you see, recommendations, you're not going to have a motion approved, like, you just need to direct your initial request to Barry so you can pass on to the developer to ask him to follow it.
But, but you're still kind of just punting it down the road, you're not saying, giving the developer, hey, we were denying this or approving this. And you need to, if we deny it, we need to work on their plaque, then they had basically a month downtime or they weren't working on the plaque, they're just pushing them further back.
Very related consensus to the.
Oh, yeah. I, I mean, I'm feeling that kind of here in general. Want to make the thing happen, it's just the, the issues with the, with the street variances are disturbing. And if they can fix that.
Yes.
Then we're, then you guys will be happy campers.
Okay, and if they're not standing until July, the council, you're all hung up on this.
Exactly.
Alright, I'll make a motion to table this until, until June 16th. My intention.
Second.
Ragged, all in favor, say aye.
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 You'll get your chance. Carla Jimenez?
Yes.
Ragged tonight?
Yes.
Jennifer Layton?
Yes.
Adam Cole?
Yes.
Sam Irons?
Yes.
Zach Raisi?
Yes.
And you'll say from this. Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, moving on. Another public hearing. Okay, the next public hearing on agenda is Freehold, Battle City. David Jones, initial request for RV park. So this title led to this public hearing. As stated, this application is for a. Possible RV park. Tax off 1,500 and four more 25B section nine. By David Jones as the applicant. Requesting an additional use permit. For the belt, for the, for the. Any objections? The objections jurisdiction? Barry, you want to watch some staff work, please?
It'll be pretty quick. Yeah, David Jones, Freehold, Battle City requested, is requesting for conditional use permit to construct a recreational vehicle park of tax loss 1,600. Of World County Tax Map 4 and 25B 09CC. 9.24 acre parcel, zone tourist commercial, currently boardman development code. See, RV parks are allowed in manufactured home, park zone property. And then there's the one that's like a US Army Corps of Engineers lease lands. And he said he believes this fits with existing B. Development Code language is commercial. As commercial in BDC subsection table 2.2.1E. A, which is the table that shows allowable uses, sub 5, sub H. And so I put the actual table in the staff report for you and. Eight. Five. Commercial uses. Is uses similar, similar to those listed above. And those that are listed above, auto-oriented and auto-dependent uses of facilities, including truck stops. Vehicle sales and repair, including automotive truck RVs and boat. Veterinarian clinics, animal clinics, laboratories, office uses, mixed-use development, housing or other. Permitted development, motels and restaurants, food service. And medical marijuana dispensary under Oregon Health and Food Services as a conditional use. To fit this request into a conditional use permit will require a posted call. Another posted call in the planning amendment. To insert language for RV parks as a conditional use. For development code, chapter 4.4 conditional use permit. It is attached with this staff report for a condition reference. Using Driftwood Village as the, or Driftwood RV park. As reference for the anticipated density of the RV park. There are 88 spaces, a clubhouse, a pool, of 20.76 acres of ground, which calculates out to 8.17 spaces per acre. The lot in question is 9.24 and at the 8.17 units per acre, this would yield 75 spaces. However, with no design drawings or supporting documentation, well, bolster the application, there is no way to determine the intention or proposal for both. So it basically comes down to a disagreement on which, between what I interpret the code and what the developer. Is looking at, at. And so. Summary. Uses similar to those listed above. Should the planning commission determine RV parks be allowed in a tourist commercial sub-district? Then this language should be added to. Table 2.2.180A as a conditional use. This will, you know, and so you, you basically have a choice to deny outright or to deny with. To the, to the staff. To the, to the, um, staff to insert. In a conditional use as an RV park or in this sub district. And if we do that through APALA, I would suggest that we do it also in the service center zone, sub district.
Yeah, obviously, there's some traffic concerns with development.
We, we did occasionally, I did get, uh. Another frame, we take some property on, and that is also a current concern, it is, and that's, it's the same, I have to say, concern. Interchange area management plan on that side is not as far along as what we have, we've got two sides of the three, one east side, we got one side of the three. On the other side.
Say, say that again, sorry, I'm getting every other word.
Uh, for bonus case, I'm assuming you probably want to say.
Yeah, yeah, so just really quickly, um, in two point two point one eight oh, tourist commercial sub district on the, where it explains what's, what zone there. One of the first things it says is purpose, is the purpose of the tourist commercial sub district is to accommodate development of commercial facilities catering to the traveling public at the I eighty four interchange. Retail services shall be limited to that necessary to serve travelers in order to avoid competition with commercial district. Service center, sub district and city center, sub district businesses, the base standards of the commercial district apply, except as modified by the standard of the sub district. So if you're talking about a, a, a park like Driftwood, um, yeah, it's not going to be a park like Driftwood, this is going to be catering, it's, a better comparison would be, for example, the Marina Park. Something that does cater to people who are going, who are daily use, who would be going, coming in just as a tourist destination for boardmen. So, which is not Driftwood, Driftwood is, is primarily month to month, if not more than that. So it would be more so kind of like the Marina Park, and actually would be better because it, the, the options that we have, and we've talked to K O A, and we've talked to, to good Sam, to, to get qualified as either one of those, you have to have quite a few amenities and everything like that, so that's what we're looking at. If we're going to do something like that. So I, I, one more thing, it's, as far as anything, it does not mention RVs per se specifically, but it does mention motels, and an RV park is basically like a motel, just you bring your own, you bring your own room.
Yeah, in case, everybody has questions, David? Anybody, uh, in my bonus case?
We have a comment on the traffic from Long Island or.
And that, that is my, that is one of my concerns as well, is we, I'd like to get something more firm on what we do with that I am, because right now it's just up in the air, the city has not, not provided exact things what they want to do, or so we can make, we can make the arrangements.
But every doubt, concern with, uh. Concern about track impacts on area, do we have any estimates of what RV park would do to trips per day or?
Again, the version of, uh, I D E manual that I have, they don't have an RV park listed anywhere in the book. You don't want, okay, use the three. Which I, kind of unusual.
So no comments in case, besides the one comment, we asked about these comments, that's over there, so, uh, we're going to have a cross examination. I think they already raised comments, um, on the, the letter that we have, received also, um, publications. Looks like we have a letter from county on it.
Yeah.
Jennifer, would you like to stand on that, uh, letter, Seth, or even as it is in the letter?
Oh, um, thank you, Chair Kane, I think it stands, um, on its own unless you have any questions.
All right, thanks, everyone. So if I read that right, I'm just going to paraphrase here, it looked like, uh, comment was if RV park. If you found, if there were an intermission code, if you found an RV park as a, uh, use similar, um, they would recommend that, set detailed application, include detailed site plan. And evidence to demonstrate how RV park would affect official use and design standards, additional reports to update. Application to show an RV park is applied to apply, an operational standard for the new area, and then the plan by two, will be referenced access to street configuration for the subject person, they show on the data map. They didn't seem to have that, so I. That has traffic volumes, I don't know how to. It's kind of traffic volume, I mean, we didn't have any. You have the RV stalls.
There's also seventy five somewhere.
I mean, listen, the seventy five was comparing it with the one we were having.
Oh.
And it, uh, that, that was Driftwood.
Okay.
And I think the RV market is.
Oh, you could get, the arena, we keep track of the amount of sites we rent, so. We, we did probably pretty easily get some figures as compared.
Well, how long the portion has stayed and get, well, yes, it is.
I used to figure, we used to, in a year, rent about ten thousand. Spaces, and so I always heard three people came at each site, so we brought in thirty thousand people a year, and I think that is under now, and I think we are bringing way more people than that. And. Since I don't have a look at any of the house things here, but, uh, yeah, the department would have some ideas.
Okay, yeah, I was going to ask you, and I would sign up.
Oh, yes, we.
Oh, then, well, because we have to pay lodging tax to start with, so, because they don't stay a month at a time, so we pay, so we leave really good track of that.
Um, after we get done involving all of the, our traffic, camera staff, we'll, we'll decide it.
Right.
Inside of.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, there's a core, they never share. They have, they, they never tell us what the figure is, so.
Any rebuttal matters from any comments, they probably see from the call. Put some of them closer in the. Other questions?
The last thing I thought, uh, denied was, uh, we didn't want to lose that commercial space and actually dedicated commercial space. Well, I understand that interpretation is maybe a little different here, um, you know, it's an opportunity for the visitors to stay a little bit longer. I mean, the person, having an RV park like the Marina is that they're a bit close to any water activities, uh, more recreational, uh, so this site. I guess I don't think that someone's going to stay here for, because this site. I'm seeing more as a Driftwood. Right up to the. Uh, the plan that was submitted last.
That I was just kind of, I was trying to look back at the, uh, requirements as far as, uh, when you're asking for an application, which is for that, and one of those planning specifications, show the scale. So I don't even know, you know, to make a decision on conditional use, which is already, you know, pretty, uh, against the brain. I will, I would want to see some type of site plan, um, for what, you know, expected traffic, you know, from seventy five stalls, that way, that means, that that means the traffic, so you, the traffic, so you. And how, you know, impact site, you have to listen.
Well, I'm sure from out of town, I wouldn't want to stay there, why would I want to stay next to the brewery with all the way that the traffic remains, I don't think we have to be something very special to be in one.
So my personal thoughts on this, Zach, um, I. I, I'm having a hard time drawing the line between, uh, the conditional use of, of, but RV for, uh, the commercial tourist zoning. Um, I don't necessarily see the correlation, uh, that that meets the, the standard of that, what that's owned for. I, I can, it, it just feels like a lot of skirting, um, for what that, that zoned area was intended for. And that aside, uh, I don't really feel like there's a lot of, there's enough information, um, and just lack of details to really make. Any kind of informed decision, uh, to, to even consider it. If there was, if there was more information, if there was, if there was some details about, uh, you know, a site plan or anything like that. Uh, you know, I would feel more comfortable moving forward with the decision, but as it stands now, um, I don't see it how it meets the letter of, how the, the land is currently zoned for the intended use.
Any other thoughts? I agree, Zach.
Well, is it, it's. So if they bring you, bring us a plan and it shows here's the spaces and all, then you should come back to the question of, is, uh, are you going to allow RV as definition to fit in there? Right, I mean, is, are you saying, we, RVs are okay, but we just need to know what it looks like, or we're going to say, RVs, it doesn't matter what it looks like, RVs still aren't. Going to be allowed, does that make sense?
Yep.
So it kind of, someone will confuse there as to.
So to clarify my position, uh, if, if I were to make any kind of decision right now, it would be, uh, no, based on the fact that it does not meet the, uh, what the zone, uh, with the land is currently zoned as. Um, I, I don't, I don't see it as meeting that standard. Um, if there is some kind of proposal for, uh, how it could meet that, I'd be open to hearing it. Uh, what I've heard now, I don't see, I don't see it meeting that standard.
Zach, can I, can I just, so do you guys have two point two point one eight oh up for you? Barry, is there any way that we can get that up, just the, where it says, A, the purpose? No, it's not.
Two point two point one eight zero?
Correct, just the, just the, where it says purpose, I didn't see it in the packet, maybe I'm correct, maybe I'm mistaken, but where it actually says the purpose of tourist commercial sub district, and that's what I'm going off of. Because I'll be honest with you, I don't know what, where else a RV park would fall, given that definition.
Isn't there a session that specifically states where RV parks are sort of manufactured home park sub districts?
And. Can you, can you get that up there, though, is that possible, to two point, two point, two point one eight oh, or it says tourist commercial sub district, A, the purpose? It's on page two point two point nine?
Upon the back of the estimation. So that's it.
I don't know why that wasn't included in it, I mean, I understand that we want to, we want to have the list, but it's obviously not on the list.
Before the list. You're on the page before the list.
Correct, correct.
He's talking about something before the list, some verbiage before this list.
Oh.
And I, I don't think, I don't think the commission can really make an educated decision until they, they read that first part.
We need the park before we do the two point two one eight A before A, there's another part we should look at.
Correct, right where it says two point two point one eight oh, tourist commercial sub district. It reads number, it's a purpose of this, of basically this commercial sub district. And it says, the purpose of the tourist commercial sub district is to accommodate development, commission, development of commercial facilities catering to the traveling public at I eighty four interchange. And I don't know, I, I mean, I live pretty much where the interchange is, and I don't see anything else that would cater more, except for maybe, I guess if you guys want a truck stop there.
Well, okay, answer, answer this for me, uh, where is the commercial in, in an RV park, I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm seeing, uh, transient residential, uh, housing, so to speak. Uh, but no commercial in that, that's where I find the definition of, of tourist commercial lacking.
I totally understand, but where is the commercial then in the hotel? So it, hotel is absolutely listed there, and I, I see this as the exact same thing. A hotel and an RV park, there is absolutely no difference, other than you bring your own, you bring your own trailer, in fact, it's, yeah, it's, there, what difference is there between a hotel and a, in an, in an RV park or a K O A?
The difference is the hotel listed in the west, RV isn't.
Correct, there's that, plus I think the, the verbiage of RV, uh, typically, for me anyway, falls under the definition of more residential than commercial.
And so you're saying that people going down the road camping and everything like that from place to place, they're, they're actually, I, I'm, I'm not understanding, they're, they're living in their RVs, it's not for recreation?
So I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm not opposed personally, uh, to something more defined, I, it's, there's, there's a lack of definition right now as to what specifically you're looking at, uh, bringing in, there's no site plan, uh.
I, I understand that, and I'm completely fine with, with whatever you guys need, that's, that's fine, like I said, I don't even have a plan, this was just basically to, I. I have several, several interested parties in the property, and they. And they would like to see if it's going to be able to be in a nice RV park or not. Okay, so I may not even put it in. It might be somebody completely different. But it would be either, it would be either they're looking at a KOA or a Good Sam is what they're looking at. And what, if we decided to do it, that's what we'd be looking at as well, because if it's a, if it's a type of park where it's, where the people stay longer than a couple of days or a month, it's just not profitable being, being the amount of spaces that you could put in there. You'd have to go daily use if you wanted to do anything and actually make any money out of it, have it be profitable.
Right, and I can appreciate that. I, I think it sounds like from all the, all the parties involved that, or from the, the, the public information that we've got back in the, the letter from the county, that everyone just kind of needs more information on it. And then as it stands now, again, from my personal standpoint, is that there's not enough information to move forward, that the high level of agree that we are, that it's, it's just, it's, it's not enough information to say, to give any kind of yes answer, or really even a no answer. It's just, it's just lacking in information on my side.
Okay, so Barry is just walking into the room, he went in and copied the first part that David is talking about. I'm not sure.
And I'll be honest, i- if, it's fine if whatever you guys decide, I would be fine with just having it go through the proper, proper channels, so that it can just be included in the tourist commercial sub district. And if you want to be more specific as far as what type of RV park you can put in there, that's fine too, but I think that this, the tourist sub, commercial sub district, based on the purpose of this commercial sub district, RV park needs to be included.
I'm not sure how the other commissioners feel. I know I've been a little boisterous on this personally, but it, it would have to be a compelling argument for, for me to feel comfortable in inclusion in a tourist commercial zoning.
RV section A was really standing out to me as the development of commercial facilities. And that's the real question, is RV park a commercial facility?
So then you're saying that hotel is, is a commercial facility, or not a commercial facility?
As it's legally defined in our section A, yes.
So you're saying a hotel is a commercial facility, but an RV park is not, and I don't see the difference in the two?
Well, there are differences. There are amenities and, and other attractions. Most hotels come with restaurants and other amenities of a sort. And it's, it's, it's also for a transient folk that's in commercial, so you have tourist commercial and you need places for those people to stay. RV parks don't necessarily meet the same criteria as a hotel would. Trying to draw that line, I think is, is kind of blurry a little bit.
Have you guys stayed in an RV park? Because the RV parks that I've stayed in, KOAs or Sam, Sam, Good Sams or whatever they are, they have all those amenities, if not more than a hotel does.
I may have stayed at different RV parks then.
And for the, for me. Basically, as stated, we, without the plan specification, we're not going to be applying the application. The decision wise, do we want a motion to request more permission or a motion to deny outright based upon not meeting the criteria for, as seen in initial use requirements in section two point two one oh one eight zero? Do you have a motion or another? We can get the same one.
I think it's mine. I will be submission. It's my reservation.
But we can, if you make a motion to that effect, we can go on and.
Okay.
Based on.
The fact that it's more recreation versus.
In the chat. So a motion to deny based on not meeting criteria of a commercial definition in the current two point two one eight zero tourist commercial sub district.
I will, Sam.
Oh, Sam. We have a motion to defer to deny based upon not meeting criteria of table two or section two point two one eight zero tourist commercial sub district. We have a second. Sam, in a second.
Earl Jimenez, yes. Regina. Jennifer Layton. Adam Cole.
Yeah.
Sam Iyers.
Yes.
Uh, Zach Racy.
Yes.
Jake Kane.
Yes.
Motion to ask six to one.
Motion to ask six to one. Wait, I'm here. You have a pronunciation here.
Roman D. Mallar.
Roman?
Roman D.
Roman D, okay.
Mallar.
Subdivision request. It's fine when you guys are carrying. The purpose of the hearing stated is a subdivision request by the order of Roman D. Mallar for a multifamily subdivision of that's a nineteen hundred partition class seven that's right. Any objections? Any objections to your decision? That's over there. Yeah, on April fourth first two thousand twenty-one, we received a subdivision request from Roman D. as Mallar. He said by task of this energy, one of the more kind of tax act for the north and by east of the DC. This is a five point one acre lot that is a little drive to Wilson Jeffries to the power station. Bought it some multi-family sub district. About all their plans to create fifty lots, four places on this lot, over sixty living units. The street will access to Southwest Little Four and end in the cul-de-sac prior to Southwest Wilson Road. So it has to not violate intersection and driveway space standards in the TSB. So we'll discuss the chapter multifamily sub district, subsection two point one point four hundred BDC. And post development is now right to allow use in this zone. All the access of ten thousand square foot minimum as a average area of other than a thousand one hundred and four point four eight square feet. Ninety feet street frontages exceed the minimum street frontage of eighty feet. And four lots on the radius of Cul-de-sac are appropriate as, as the radius is always a little shorter than the straight lines. On elevation drawings, wherever the application indicates to be get table design parameters have more than not belongs to the kinds of access and circulation. Although the supportive street is a little longer than the usual at sixteen, six hundred and nineteen feet, this is to meet the TSB standards. For intersection, intersection spacing of roadway and driveway spacing, maintaining the twenty-foot access easement west of the property. May have to have some conflicts, additional easement may be required on the lot, on lot one. This access easement is the access to, to mail delivery and three homes as a private delivery via UPS. Check three point two. It is land state in the street, trees and walls. The city will be according to waterline easement of five feet for the eastern most lot line of lot eight. Five for easement. For the western most property line. And so we end up with a dead foot, that way we can interconnect with the existing gate that is now by the by path. At future, in, at some point in the future. And that will create a circular flow and they're all good at it. Traffic in the back study. In accordance to the subsection four point ten point one hundred sub B, calculated that we share the trips by per apartment. Multifamily unit, three hundred and eighty DT would not trigger the need for traffic impact study. Citizen, the land use laws are green lights all the way. Go to the findings of that. Well, this is supposed to be published in the editorial in May, May of August, required in the rest of the parts on May fourth twenty-one. Were they twenty-six, two thousand and one? Excuse me. For me, two thousand, May twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one, all caring. The applications consistent with, and will be subject to chapter three point one access situation on development. Three of these applications considered living subjects to chapter three point two. Or the applications consistent in such, in chapter three point three vehicle license. Under five, this application, applications consistent will be subject to chapter two point four of facility standards. Number six, this application will be subject to chapter four point ten traffic impact study upon dog. This application, seven, it, it, it goes in, it's kind of consistent with goals one through fourteen, chapter twenty-one, chapters fifteen, thirteen, five, multiple support. Staff has received two phone calls, one from Gary, both from Gary Dover. He lives in the first, well, the second house on that third road. And he was really concerned and had above his access in talking with a developer. They agreed to the easement and to provide an access. Taking the goal for a four to ten. There's three houses in here that are, are affected. The city owns the access easement, they have made provisions to to obtain additional easement to allow for the deliveries of send access. This application, the summary of this application is for subdivision of a large one that includes on five point zero one acre parcel. The little parcel set by fifteen lots, having to be eleven thousand nine hundred and four point four eight square feet. So, roll past the staff report. The home or the builder agreed to easy access for the either, either that or take it out of block one, take enough out of block one, you still have access to the, to the door reasons on. I mean, the proposed application showed twenty-foot access easement. Yeah, but it does, you did, did the house behind on the west side of that road is actually out on the existing, the property that is being developed. At five point one oh one acres, that, that road, that twenty-foot access easement was off of Wilson, but it doesn't go all the way through to Willow Ford. So that's good. After talking in order with the older go work to get, make sure that there is an access, it may take down the size of that lot one, cause that's, that lines up with the house on Willow Ford that's going to be a lead to the west. So the house is built for the old spot? No, the access easement was thrown only for off of Wilson Road, it was temporarily intended to go through. But after forty years with it being there and people driving on it. Pretty, yeah. Um, so, just wondering, anybody else have any questions, officer, Barry and staff? Very, so. Uh, listen right in the phone case. Okay, I'm originally from. I think you had one called to it. Yeah. From my, there, from my view.
Barry, uh, we're online with you and we can answer questions and provide information. And we're ready and willing to address any issues. Uh, this is Van Borhees with Appalachian Engineering. And I'll be the project engineering and the design engineer for this. And I also have the principals with me for questions and, you know, hopefully to present anything we can to make this uh, show that we've put, you know, a definite effort in to make it fit everything, fit the goals, fit the planning and fit the requirements. We've provided a sixty-foot right of way, so there's extra right of way to where we can do. We will have the two parking spots per unit, plus there'll be on-street parking for guests. We, we definitely want to work out a ribbon curb system in a narrow grassy swale for drainage. Is there, is there spec, any specific concerns for the fire department with the length of this cul-de-sac or the diameter of it?
Yeah. You'll be required to, what it is here to find this order, be able to recover this is the
I, I know we're, we'll be ready to work with, with Barry and the fire department dealing with the amount of paving and whatnot in the cul-de-sac, because we want it to be, you know, functional for engine turnaround. And we don't have a problem with putting in the hydrants for, for fire protection. As far as that easement goes, I guess I, I'm struggling a little bit. There seems to be some little bit of encroachment up at the north end of this. Our, our west line is, is the, our west line is right on the side of the easement. We, we have not encroached on that 20 feet, to my knowledge, in any way.
Someone's saying, really, uh, the green line, I'm looking at. Are you saying that they're pointing to be from that point to the gentleman's house?
Well, does the first house encroach on the easement?
Yeah. The easement does not run through the house that is just to the, to the west of your lot is actually, their, their, their property, the easement stops just at the back lot. Didn't, didn't go, go all the way through. We want to make sure that they're.
On the north or the south end?
On the north end. Everything else, the 20-foot easement is there.
It doesn't go through over here.
We could, we can work with that. We'll work with, we'll work with Barry and the city to, to resolve that issue.
Okay. Yeah, the only concern that I had in question is we don't landmark the gentleman in the middle of that access to his property. So if you were working with the city and Barry did that and published where that gentleman has right to his property, all good.
We'll work to make sure that, that there's access on the north end to that easement for the houses and for, and actually goes by the fire department too. But we'll make sure that there's access to it. We're struggling a little bit to hear the chairman clearly.
All right, just talking to the floor here.
It was modeling.
Yeah, modeling is the word. He's looking on a survey now. There's a rug not on the survey now.
Yeah, I was trying to understand, but anyways, I think we didn't understand, I think I worked with the private owner, very good for that. That easement is upheld and even, I mean, if somebody's been using it for a century or your time already, it's, it's going to be.
It's designed on 1978.
Yeah. So they do define the easement regardless of that, but. Any on this case or this? Any on this case? There are none moving through across the examination to the complicated. In complicated, inside the common area of fire hazards, condition approval include the comment for the mortgage to migrants.
This is a location. Want to lay it down there. East side of the street. So they can wave, they can hold on the same size, they can wave those.
So no, no, that is needed. At this point in time, we'll close the hearing and begin the deliberation by council. I guess like a thorough, I think it's a good product. Doesn't sound like we have an oppositional community or inside of irony. Sounds like an issue with the housing on the west side would be addressed. Only thing I have comment on is being multifamily and right across the road from the school. Maybe there should be some thought as to providing an access through for, you know, walk-in and out or something to schools.
That water, that waterline easement. If that's finished off, you got a 10-foot alleyway to go right through to existing multi-use type school.
So when you say 10 foot of waterline easement, I don't see it.
It's, it's not on there yet. It's one of the conditions. There, there's two, the two lots base, base of the apex, well.
Eight, nine.
Eight, nine. Each one will donate, will basically put five footies or will put water line right underneath that and put it at a minimal ground.
An improved walkway type of thing?
Yeah. Then another subdivision is then it works through the hand for the for the kid going to the school and being able to be right across the street from the school.
Thanks, Ray. Those are my own.
And relocation too.
I was looking at the floor plan. I don't know if you're specific to the general or, or for, you know, the sheriff's floor plan. When I was in college, this was, was exactly, I mean, the exact. Zach, Sam, you got anything?
I do not. Did I, did I, I just want to confirm, did I hear correctly, the only two conditions we're hearing are the, the pedestrian easement walkway and fire department approval?
Today, I mean, yeah, so it sounded like we had basically two conditions of approval, once a walkway or possibly a walkway between lots. Required the fire hires, two fire hires, both by the fire department. And, and I don't, I don't think it's, I guess you can mention and the continued negotiation of the right, will be followed by the city. Now, your free conditions.
Yeah, that sounds good to me. Anything else? I'm good on my end.
Any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the Ramadi Malai application with the conditions listed previously with the fire department negotiations with the neighbors and the walkway.
So a motion by Sam, second by Carla, to approve the application with three conditions. First condition being, I'm going to jump these up, I think they're the same. First condition would be to divide my renovation firearms and the required firearms. I think it's two hiders along East Foundry Road. Second condition, provide a, 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 every walking path between lots eight and nine on the southern part of the dominance by access to street for pedestrians, school kids and that kind of thing. And third is to continue negotiations, work with the city to solve the easement issue on the west side of the property.
Pregnant night, this Jennifer Layton, yes, Adam Cole.
Yes.
Sam Irons.
Yes.
Zach Racy.
Yes.
Kane.
Yes.
What was your last being asked? Thank you. Let's get through this. Anything else to record on this set of items?
No, I, I guarantee you I'm not for the money. And thank you all.